Good evening and welcome everybody. Thanks for taking the time out of your evening to join us for this public hearing tonight. This is a public hearing for the DeGroot Marina, Clyde Township, Alleghen County. My name is Ryan Blazek. I'm with Eagles Environmental Support Division. Just going to be helping to moderate the public hearing tonight, but before we get too far, just have a couple logistical things to go through. This is what our agenda looks like tonight. We're going to go through an introduction, which is what we're doing right now. The big thing to keep in mind is there's actually two parts to this session tonight. We have an informational session. That's where the applicant has an opportunity to present the proposed project, project and application. And we'll follow that up with the question and answer session. That whole informational session should end at about six thirty tonight. And then after that, we're going to move on to the second part, which is the official hearing part. That's where you'll have an opportunity to submit an official comment for the record on this project and application. We'll tell you how to do that a little bit later. And everybody will have an opportunity to make a comment. And then we're going to go through who to contact if you have further questions tonight. All right, a couple more logistical things for those who haven't been part of these hearings before. All lines are muted during the webinar, so you'll be able to hear us, everything that we're saying. And you'll be able to hear other people and you'll be able to speak, to ask questions and so forth, but it'll be muted otherwise. And if you do have questions, you can submit them using the Q and A box in the Zoom toolbar at any time. When we get to the Q and A part, like I said, you will have a chance to ask verbal questions. We'll tell you how to do that. And then we are recording this meeting. This is going to be posted on our YouTube channel in a couple of days. So you have an opportunity to forward it on or review it if you like. All right. And at this point, I'd like to invite our other Eagle staff on the line to turn the cameras and mics on and introduce themselves.
Good evening. My name's Jason Combs. I'm with the Water Resources Division out of the Kalamazoo District Office, and I will be serving as the Hearings Officer tonight. For those of you who may have attended the public hearing that was back in March of this year. This is actually a, the same permit application, but is a hearing on a modified, a modified version of the proposed project.
Hey, I'm Derek Haraldson, the District Supervisor for the Kalamazoo District Office. So just here, Assistant Jason and Ryan with the hearing tonight. Thanks, everybody, for joining.
Yeah, thank you both and for that clarification on the project, Jason. All right, at this point, we're going to bring David DeGroot, who's in the audience. We're going to unmute David and allow him to present some information on the project for us tonight. So, Mr. DeGroot, it looks like you are unmuted and you can begin when you're ready. I have my, your slides here. If you just want to tell me when to advance them, I can do that for you. And then it'd be great if you can just keep it to around fifteen minutes or, or less, ten to fifteen, so that we have enough time for question and answers at the end. So feel free to take it away.
Okay, thank you, Ryan. Thank you for the opportunity to present the proposed project at tonight's public hearing. In this section of the presentation, I would like to cover the following topics. Number one, I'd like to provide an overview of the new location and design of the dock. This new location design is called Alternative E in this presentation. Next, I'd like to go over Michigan law as it pertains to the docks, Part 301, and its prerequisites for issuance of a permit and how, according to our analysis, this project meets all of those prerequisites. And then third, I'd like to go over Michigan laws that pertains to wetlands. And that's called Part 303 and its prerequisites for issuance of permit and how, according to our analysis, this project meets all of those prerequisites. And then lastly, I'd like to give the reasons why we are making this adjustment, this modification, if you will, to our proposed application. So let's move on to Exhibit One. Exhibit One includes an excerpt of the plan of survey for the eighty acres that we purchased a few years ago and have subdivided into twelve parcels. The largest parcel is the Park Parcel, and that is depicted here in this exhibit as the shaded area. The Park Parcel is just over forty acres and includes one thousand one hundred feet of lake frontage and has easements for the use of the owners of Parcels three through eleven. Now, Parcels three through eleven are on the east side of the property along Fifty-Ninth Street. And those are single-family lots with a minimum size of one acre. Each of those lots, lots three through eleven, has deeded access to Hutchins Lake and also deeded rights to enjoy a dock on Hutchins Lake. Let's move on to Exhibit Two. Exhibit Two is an overhead view showing the original location of the Marina and the new location of the Marina on Parcel Two. So we're moving it to the west about a thousand feet. This new location is also, is referred to, as I said, as Alternative E. And it is also more than a thousand feet from the Fifty-Ninth Street boat launch. And like the previous location is outside of the shallow cove area. Let's move on to Exhibit Three. Exhibit Three is a scaled overhead view of the Alternative E seasonal dock on Parcel Two. It includes a main section which extends a hundred and twenty feet from the shore. This main section is attached perpendicularly to a lopsided T-section which runs parallel to the shore and is a hundred and eight feet long. Attached to this T-section are eight fingers, each twenty feet long. This dock is designed to accommodate nine boats, each not exceeding twenty-five feet in length. Let's move on to Exhibit Four. Exhibit Four is a scaled overhead view of the day-use dock. Now, this day-use dock is in concert with the Alternative E Marina. This dock extends fourteen feet over wetlands and then fifty-seven feet over Hutchins Lake. This dock will be placed forty-eight feet from the riparian boundary line on the east side of our property. This forty-eight feet provides more than the required setback distance required for marinas in Part 301. The purpose of the day-use dock is for the convenience of the owners and guests to access the lake at a closer location than the overnight mooring location. The day-use dock is about a thousand feet closer to the lots and would allow easier access for guests to board a boat. Just to be clear, this day-use dock is not for overnight mooring of boats and is only fifty-seven feet over the water on Hutchins Lake. Let's move on to Exhibit Five. Just want to spend a little bit of time on Michigan law, Part 301, as it pertains to riparian rights. There are a number of components of the definition in Michigan law, and the major one is that lakefront property owners have a right to install a dock anchored to the owner's riparian bottom land, provided it does not interfere with navigability. I will get back to what this navigability means according to the law. When we received approval of the land division from Clyde Township, we also conveyed certain riparian rights to lots three through eleven. Some have questioned, some opponents have questioned how this type of fundling can be approved. Well, it was approved according to Clyde Township's Anti-Fundling Regulation of R4 Zoning, which states that any multiple-unit residential development that shares a common lakefront area or frontage may not allow lake access use to more than one single-family home for each one hundred feet of lake frontage. Because we have one thousand one hundred feet of lake frontage for the Park Parcel, Clyde Township approved the land split, which included certain riparian rights for lots three through eleven. Further, Michigan courts, including the Michigan Supreme Court, have found that backlot owners can obtain riparian rights through an easement. They have upheld those rights. So based on Michigan law, Clyde Township ordinances and precedent court cases, the backlot owners clearly have certain riparian rights as defined in the recorded easements. Furthermore, Eagle has approved as late as July of last year a Marina in which off-lake users have been granted access through a common area for overnight mooring of boats. Let's move on to Exhibit Six. Part 301, Michigan Part Law, Part 301, talks about docks and lays out certain rules for the issuance of a permit for docks, specifically marinas. And those rules are, the Marina must extend from the riparian property. The Marina does, should not interfere unreasonably with navigation. And the Marina should be locating designed to operate consistently with the correlative rights of other riparians. So regarding one above, or the first bullet above, it has been demonstrated numerous times that the proposed dock operates consistently with other riparian areas and, and also is in our riparian interest area. Regarding two above, or the second bullet point, Part 301 defines what this means, and that is that the closest distance of a boat or a portion of the dock shall not be less than one point five times the length of the finger or the boat moored at that finger. So according to that, that distance and a twenty-five-foot-long boat, which is the maximum-sized boat that can be moored at the dock, that means that the, the dock or the boat moored at the dock should not be closer than thirty-seven and a half feet from a riparian boundary. Regarding three above, the proposed Marina is similar in size and function as to other docks on Hutchins Lake. There are at least four other marinas on Hutchins Lake. And three of those marinas are along the eastern shore of Hutchins Lake. And the combined Marina at Eagle Point Park provides more mooring locations and is larger in size by square foot than the one that we are proposing here. As a result of the above, we feel that the proposed Marina in the Alternative E location, as well as the day-use dock, meet and exceed the prerequisites for the issuance of a permit. Let's move on to Exhibit Seven. Is that the next exhibit? Exhibit Seven provides the, the math behind the, the interference with navigability. And you can see here that we provide the more than ample setback distances according to Part 301. Let's move on to Exhibit Eight. Part 303 deals with wetlands and boardwalks over wetlands and such. And Part 303, Michigan law states that the prerequisites for the issuance of a permit to construct an open pile of boardwalk over wetlands are the following. One, the issuance of a permit is in the public interest, and that is defined. Two, the permit is necessary to realize the benefits derived, and three, the activity is otherwise lawful. So what does public interest mean? Well, it's defined in the law. So Part 303 states that in determining whether the activity is in the public interest, the benefit which reasonably may be expected to accrue from the proposal should be balanced with the reasonably foreseeable detriments of the activity. So within the application, we considered a number of factors in terms of materiality and impact and have concluded that the benefits far away, outweigh the de minimis impact. And we looked at such factors as that we are going over fourteen feet of wetland area. And this wetland area is, is not, it's not a habitat for fish. It's currently short grasses on soil that is occasionally seasonally wet. And I, we also took a look at that there is no littoral impact such as a seawall or riprap that is proposed for the one thousand one hundred feet of, of the Park Parcel. There are several others that we took a look at, and our conclusion is that we have determined that the benefits of this activity far outweigh any de minimis effect. So just two more things on revisions made to this application in moving the Marina from the location that we previously submitted, which was close to the Fifty-Ninth Street, closer to the Fifty-Ninth Street boat launch. And then we came up with this alternative E location. And that alternative E location is over one thousand feet to the west. And the reason for that revision is actually in response to the comments and a suggestion from Eagle representatives. While our analysis concluded not only that alternative E design and location, but also the previous design location of the Marina met and exceeded Part 301 prerequisites for approval, Eagle reps indicated that in their opinion, there is a more prudent location, and that may be the alternative E location as depicted in this revision of the application. Lastly, we believe that the application, including this revision, along with the attachments and videos, provided strong evidence in these three key, key areas, that we as the owner of the Park Parcel have riparian rights and have provided certain riparian rights to nine backlot properties. Two, that the Alternative E dock, along with the day-use dock, provide ample room for the Fifty-Ninth Street boat launch and are outside of the shallow cove area. And that third, the prerequisites for approval, according to Parts 301 and 303, have been met. That concludes my presentation.
All right. Thank you for providing that information, Mr. DeGroot. We're going to move on to the question and answer portion here. So if you have a question, you have a couple of ways of doing that, of asking a question. One, as mentioned before, you could submit your question using the Q and A box at the bottom of your screen. Just hit that button, type your question in, hit enter, and it'll come to us. You can click the raise hand icon. You see the hand icon at the bottom of your screen, and what that will do is raise your hand in Zoom. And then we'll call on you in turn. And then if you're on the phone, there are some phone callers. You can type pound two on your receiver, and that will raise your hand in Zoom, and then we'll call on you using the last four digits of your phone number. So with that, feel free to any of your questions. We have a couple of minutes to do so, and I have some in the Q and A box already. And I'll just kind of go back and forth between the Q and A box and raised hands as, as we're able. So with that, our panelists are going to be the same, Jason and Derek, are going to be answering questions, and Mr. DeGroot is also going to be on the line. All right, this next one is, this first one is, it sounds kind of a procedural question. Is there a point where additional modifications to the plan are just automatically rejected? Meaning, how many times do we have to go through this? I'm assuming that it means the hearing. So I don't know, Jason, if you can talk a little bit about modifications and how those are handled and so forth.
Sure thing. So the answer to that question is, is no, we don't have really a limitation. As part of a permit application process, we may go back and forth, or Eagle will certainly go back and forth with a, a permit applicant possibly considering things like feasible alternatives and similar and, and similar issues or addressing certain questions. With that said, there, we, the statutes do have processing deadlines. Those can be extended in certain circumstances, but even that does have, have deadlines to, or a point where a, either a decision has to be made, or a decision has to be made one way or the other. So until those, those deadlines are reached, it is certainly a possibility we can have discussions with an applicant.
All right. Thanks, Jason. Next question is how deeded access, do they have, how do they have deeded access already? So it sounded like in the presentation, deeded access has been obtained. Is, is there anything information that you have on that, Jason, or that David?
My understanding would be that that would be any access like that, or any deeds or easements, would be something that would be done through the, either the, I would believe through the township. So if Mr. DeGroot has further information, that'd be a good time to share, but that, that's my understanding.
All right. If I'm on, yes, Jason, you are, or Mr. Combs, you are correct. There is a recorded document called the Rights and Restrictions Document that is recorded along with each of the parcel numbers, including the Park Parcel, and which have been approved by Clyde Township. So it's recorded in Alleghen County. And within that Rights and Restrictions Document are, are the rules on how, and, and the rights, rights and rules, basically, of how those parcel numbers, three through eleven, can use the lake or access the lake and also use a dock. Just two rules in that, by the way, are, one, that a boat moored at the dock cannot be longer than twenty-five feet. And then second, there's like a rule that says, no loud noises after midnight. Now, so it gets into little details like that. But there are a number of other ones, rights and restrictions, all identified in this document.
All right. Yeah, thank you both for answering that question. There are a lot of questions in here on the day dock. And so I'm going to go through some of these on the day dock specifically, and then we'll go to some raised hands, because we have some of those as well. So who will monitor overnight mooring on the day-use dock? And then kind of along those lines, another one says, who will enforce the day dock in the event it's moored overnight?
Well, I, I think I'll take that one. That, that one is, is enforced, enforced, will be enforced by the homeowners association. That is not created yet, but it will be created. And so that will be a group of residents that will enforce that.
Okay, thank you. And then another question. The one is the depth of water for the day dock, where that's at. And then can the public launch visitors, can the, can the public launch visitors use the proposed day dock? Oh, public boat launch visitors must be. Public launch visitors use the proposed day dock.
Okay, so first of all, the depth of the water, three and a half to four feet in that area. And then public use? No, there's no public use. It's only, I mean, if you buy a lot, three through eleven, you can use the dock and use that area. If, if you're not an owner or a guest, you can't use it.
Thank you very much for answering those, Mr. DeGroot. I'm going to go to raised hands that we have here. Before I start, just so you're aware, this portion is for question and answer. So if you have a statement, hold on to those. We're going to go into the, the part where you can make a statement for the record here in a little bit. So Richard Conrad, we are going to unmute you on our end. And then you can unmute yourself and ask your question.
Okay, my question is relates to the depth of the water for the day dock. I was over there. I was approximately sixty feet off. I used my rangefinder, sixty feet off the shore. Measured the depth roughly a month and a half ago, and it was less than two feet. Now, I did some research. In the typical wake boat, the draft on that boat is between thirty and thirty-six inches with the fixed impeller below the boat. So it obviously is going to require dredging, or the bottom is going to get torn up. Has anybody looked into that? Has anybody looked into the dredging? Because I can guarantee if the, if the dock is allowed, the dredging will happen whether he has a permit or not. I see him ski daily without a spotter. The guy has no integrity.
Well, I'll, I'll take part of that. The, at this point in time, there, there is no portion of this permit application for dredging. That would have to be reviewed. That would, any, any, any proposed dredging would require a permit under Part 301, and they would, and Mr. DeGroot would have to submit a permit application for it.
All right. Thanks, Jason. And thanks for, is there any other part of that that we're able to answer at this point?
Well, what, have you looked at the depth? Have you measured the depth? Has anybody from Eagle actually measured the depth? It's less than two feet.
That's not true.
Have you measured it? I measured it myself. I got out of the boat and measured it.
We, we are going to have to go on to more questions because we have a ton in here, but thank you for your question, Richard. All right. Next up, Judith Gerard. We are going to unmute you, and you can ask your question. Looks, are you there, Judith? Just hit the microphone button on the, there you go.
Thank you very much. Um, a couple of things here. On the first screen, it told us that waterfront properties can have their own dock. Those properties are not waterfront.
You say on the first screen? Is that you mean the first slide, Judith?
He was talking about any property in Michigan that has one, can have a dock. These are not waterfront properties.
Okay, so what, what is the question that you had? Just?
Well, if they don't have the, the waterfront property, then they, it would seem that they shouldn't have a dock.
So what is your, what is your question for the panel, Judith?
Why would this proved if you buy a, a lot and build a house that is not on the water? But you get a deeded lot anyway?
So, so the question is, do you get a deeded lot if you purchase one of these? Is it the question? David, I don't know if you're able to provide any clarification to Judith on how that would work, or?
Yeah, yes, I, I, I will be able to. So that shaded area at the bottom, that's the, the shoreline, that is one thousand one hundred feet of shoreline. That's the Park Parcel's shoreline, okay? That shoreline of one thousand one hundred feet allows us, according to Clyde Township, allows us to have the Parcels three through eleven, which are off-lake properties, allows them to have deeded rights, riparian rights to Hutchins Lake. It's similar to, if you know the lake, it's similar to what Eagle Point Park is. Now, if you know Eagle Point Park, that has one access point, there are nine lots that are accessing that Eagle Point Park. Now, I have to note that Eagle Point Park only has lake frontage of two hundred and something feet. So back then, when the Richter Rinks designed this Eagle Point Estates, the law was such that you could have, you know, a lot of lots accessing a smaller space. But Clyde Township made a revision to the law, that's Article eight something. And they said, no, if you have one access point, you have to have one hundred feet for every off-lake property. So it, it's Clyde Township ordinances, it's Michigan law, and it's also the Supreme Court of Michigan has upheld this type of access.
All right. Thank you.
Please let me know, but respectfully so. It, it sounds like a stretch for getting these off-the-lake properties access. And there's another thing with the, the township and the county and Eagle. There are residents on this lake that are trying every day to put a deck near the water's edge. They apply for a permit and they are turned down completely.
Judith, you're going to have an opportunity to make a statement for the record on this project, but I want to get to at least a couple Ju- Judith, you're gonna have an opportunity to make a statement for the record on this project, but we I wanna get to at least a couple more questions if we can, and we're running short on time. So I appreciate your question, but any any comments or statements you have an opportunity to make those.
I am against this proposal due to land coverage.
Right. So there's one question in here. I wanna make sure that I get to. Um, why? Why hasn't Eagle required a professional assessment of the impact of the wetlands? So Jason, is another procedural question. Can you speak to this question at all, Jason?
I I think so. If if he's asking about whether anybody's done any assessment of the wetlands um. Uh, in pre, Mr. DeGroot has submitted a and had a professional. Uh, I wa- I an environmental consultant, take a look and uh in review. The presence of wellens on the property. Um, as for it and as part of this permit application, we would we do review. What types of impacts there might be to wetlands. Um. Yeah, I I think that that covers it.
All right, yeah, thank thanks for that uh answer, Jason. Um, this is gonna have to be the final question because we're gonna have to move on to the next uh. Part of the hearing here so that everybody has an opportunity to make a statement. Um, so this question is, Mr. DeGroot stated that the the benefits outweigh the negatives to the public. Uh, they didn't hear anything about what the. Benefits are. So what are the benefits to the public of this project? And I think in the context of your presentation, I'm assuming. So I don't know if Jason or David, you're able to provide any clarification of the benefits to the public.
Okay, um, I I I'll reply just in this way, maybe um Mr. Combs has further. But uh, part three oh three deals with wetlands impact, and they lay out um what is defined as the public interest. And um it public interest is is defined as. Uh, you have to look at whether the activities in the public interest, the benefits must. Outweigh the 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 negatives or the foreseeable detriments. And the benefits can are are not necessarily. You know, the what I would say are the public benefits or the outside of the owners. Um, so you know, we we looked at the, you know, the benefits of this. Uh, in the public interest, we looked at um that. You know, the relative size of where the boardwalk will be installed is extremely small compared to the entire wetland. We looked at uh that the proposal activity is seasonal. We looked at uh that um, you know, the proposed activity is on the park parcel. And uh that we looked at that the boardwalk is designed to connect the upland area to the proposed dock. For the benefit of the owners of parcels three through eleven. And then without the boardwalk, users of the proposed dock will be required to traverse through fourteen feet of wetlands. And these wetlands are occasionally wet. They're not always wet. I I cut grass there. Um, children and persons with physical disabilities may find it difficult to traverse through the fourteen feet of wetlands. So this allows greater enjoyment for the Hutchins Lake owners of parcels three through eleven. By having this seasonal open pile boardwalk. What are the detriments? Well, the detriments are that there's these uh open pile boardwalk on wetlands. And um they don't penetrate the surface. They don't block any water. Um, there there's no um in this area fourteen feet. There's no uh fish that get into the area. Because it's 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 not, doesn't happen. So we concluded that uh the benefits far outweigh any detriment.
Anything you wanna add?
Just uh just to add a little extra here, um. Part of what we what um as the mystery group was indicating, part of what an application requires us to do. Especially one that is that potentially impacts wetlands is make a determination as to whether or not a project is within the public interest. Um, and part of that is weighing out what uh what benefits there might be for the project versus detriments. To the wetland and in general. So that is something that is needs to be. Is one of the things that Eagle determines during one of these during a permit application pro uh as part of the process.
All right, thank you, Jason. Um, yeah, thank you to everybody who submitted your questions. Um. If you have additional questions that we didn't get to, there were quite a few that we haven't. Uh, I'm gonna be providing Jason's contact information a little bit later on tonight, so you'll be able to contact and can follow up with Jason. To help get those questions answered. Um, but before we go into how to make a comment. I'm gonna go through the other ways to submit a comment in case you didn't wanna make a comment tonight. Uh, you can provide your comments directly into Eagle's MindViro system by accessing public hearing event under HPN. Six X Z N E Y one G N. I'm just reading that out loud for the people on the phone. Or by mail at Eagle Water Resources Division, Kalamazoo District Office. Seven nine five three Adobe Road, Kalamazoo, Michigan, four nine zero zero nine. And then the comment period after this public hearing will be open for ten days, which is September seventh. All right, so with that, Jason, I'd like to to invite you to read the opening statement and we'll kick off the hearing part um of tonight's.
Thanks, Ryan. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Jason Combs, and I am the district representative in the Water Resources Division of the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy. Also known as Eagle. I will be serving as the hearings officer for this public hearing on Eagle submission number. HPN dash six X Z N dash E Y one G N. With me tonight is Derek Haraldson, District Supervisor in the Kalamazoo District Office. To describe how this is going to work tonight, I will begin with some background information about why we are here tonight. I will then describe the purpose of the hearing and how your comments will be used. Following that, I will outline the procedures under which we will take your comments and then describe what will happen after tonight's hearing. It will then be time for you to provide comments, and we will spend the majority of time tonight listening to those comments. At the end of the hearing, I will read the closing statement. By way of background information, the Water Resources Division is responsible for administering a variety of programs that help protect inland lakes and streams. Wetlands, floodplains, sand dunes, and the Great Lakes. These programs require of regulate certain activities such as dredging or filling a lake, stream or wetland. Constructing a dam, constructing a marina, placing shore protection or constructing docks. And building in a designated critical sand dune area of wetland or flood plain. The law governing these was those responsibilities is the Natural Resources Environmental Protection Act nineteen ninety-four P A four fifty-one. As amended. We are here tonight because David DeGroot has proposed the following. To construct a marina on Hutchins Lake bottom land and wetland. By seasonally installing an open pile dock extending perpendicular to the shore. A maximum length of a hundred and twenty feet, and uh this is a maximum width of four feet. Ending in a T-shaped finger pier that is a maximum length of a hundred and eight feet and a maximum width of four feet. Then connecting eight seasonal open pile finger piers that are each a maximum length of twenty feet and a maximum width of three feet. Then seasonally installing an open pile dock extending perpendicular to the shore, maximum length of fifty-seven feet. Which is a maximum width of four feet. The open pile dock shall have an additional portion over well and that is a maximum length of fifteen feet is a maximum width of four feet. The proposed marina will shall have a total number of eight boat slips. Total wetland impact is approximately zero point zero one acre. No middle mitigation is proposed. In order for a permit to be granted, Eagle must find that the proposed activities described in the public notice meet certain criteria set by part three oh one. Inland lakes and streams in part three oh three, wetlands protection of act four fifty-one. In general, we must consider the effect of the proposed project on the lake and wetlands. When reviewing an application for permit under the provisions of part three oh one of act four fifty-one, Eagle is charged to make the following considerations. As required by section three oh one oh six of part three oh one. One, the department shall issue a permit if it finds that the structure or project will not adversely affect the public trust or riparian rights. Two, the department shall not grant a permit if the proposed project or structure will unlawfully impair or destroy. Any of the waters or natural other natural resources of the state. When reviewing an application for permit under the provisions of part three oh three wetlands protection of act four fifty-one. Eagle is charged to make the following indications as required by section three oh three one one of part three oh three. A permit for an activity listed in section three oh three or four. Shall not be approved unless the department determines that the issuance of a permit. Is in the public interest, that the permit is necessary to realize the benefits derived from the activity, and that the activity is otherwise lawful. In addition, a permit shall not be issued unless it is shown that an unacceptable disruption will not result to the aquatic resources. And that and also a permit shall not be issued unless the applicant also shows either of the following. Either one, the proposed activity is primarily dependent on being located in wetland. Or a feasible and prudent alternative does not exist. The purpose of tonight's hearing is to give anyone interested in the project application an opportunity to provide information. That Eagle can use in making the decision whether or not to issue a permit. Please recognize that Eagle can only use the information you provide if it relates to the criteria that Eagle must use in making a decision. Some of you may simply want to express your support or opposition to the project. We will be happy to make note of your position, but please understand that Eagle is by law not allowed to base our decision. On whether or not there is widespread support or opposition to the project. In just a moment, I will outline the procedures we will use for taking your comments. But before I do, I need to mention that the notice of this hearing was published in a Sagatuck Commercial Record on August seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three. As we discussed at the beginning of the informational session, if you have a comment to provide, raise your hand in the Zoom toolbar. To ensure that the hearing is conducted in a fair manner, we will follow these steps. First, the applicant and or their consultant has already had an opportunity to describe the proposed project. Second, we will then call on those who have indicated in their registration that they would like to speak. After that, we will call on all those that raise their hand in the Zoom in their Zoom toolbar that they would like to make a comment if they haven't already been called upon. As a reminder, if you're participating in this hearing via telephone only. Follow the directions of the moderator on how to identify that you would like to make a comment. You may also submit your comments to Eagle via My Enviro. Email or US Mail. When all the comments have been completed, we will ask if anyone else would like to make a statement. When your name is called, your microphone will be unmuted. As you begin your comments, please state your name and any group or association you may represent. Each person will be given three minutes to make their comments. We will indicate to you when you have a minute left. Please begin wrapping up your comments and end within the allotted time. If need be, we will indicate when your time is ended. I ask that we all be courteous and respectful to one another tonight. Please also recognize that Eagle staff is here tonight to provide a fair opportunity for you to express your comments. On the proposed project and to listen to those product comments. This hearing is being recorded, and your comments will be a part of the information Eagle will consider in making its decision. On whether or not to issue a permit on the proposed project. The public comment period for this public hearing. Is open for ten days from the date of this hearing, ending on September seventh, two thousand twenty-three. Additional information and comments submitted in writing during the ten-day public comment period will also be considered in Eagle's decision. Following the close of the public comment period, Eagle will make a decision to either issue a permit for the project as this as proposed. Or with modifications, or send a letter of denial. You may find out what the decision is by checking the Eagle My Enviro website and searching for the application number. H P N dash six X Z N E Y one G N. Thank you for your attention. We will begin calling the names of those who have indicated that they would like to make a statement.
All right, thanks for reading that opening statement, Jason. Um, as Jason mentioned, we're gonna start with people who during registration indicated they wanna make a comment in the order of registration. Uh, I have a list of fifteen names. Um, so after we get to those fifteen names, if you haven't made a comment. We'll go to people who have their hand raised. Everyone will have an opportunity to make a comment. Uh, it'll be one comment per person. Um, if I call your name and there's somebody else on the line or with you that would make like to make a comment. Uh, they can make a comment. Just let me know at that time. Um, and again, you have three minutes. I'll give you a one-minute heads up. And then um, yeah, please identify or please list your name and association if you have one um that you're affiliated with. Uh, so with that, I'm gonna go ahead and call some names out and also mention the next person up so that they know. Um, that their turn is next. So we're gonna start with uh Scott Bale. So Scott, we're gonna unmute you on our end. Um, and then you can unmute yourself, and then you can begin your comment when you're ready, and I'll let you know when you have a minute minute left.
All right, thank you very much. Um, um, just to comment on two parts. Uh, number one is. The five parameters that Eagle has under the department under issue uh not law number three oh three. Um, that the number one says the permit would be in public interest. Mr. DeGroot clearly made that comment just a minute ago that these would be. This would be in the interest of the eleven lots, which everybody can see exactly why. Um, so they can be sold as lakefront property. Uh, also in department three oh three or law three oh three. Uh, talked about no unacceptable disruption to aquatic resources. Um, this bay that we're talking about is the last unprotected bay on this body of water. Um, every other bay on this lake is wide open to the to the boat, to the wake boats, to everything else. This is the only unprotected bay on this lake. Um, it's ecological, biological, uh watershed, spring-fed area. Is uh of utmost importance to the survival of Hutchins Lake. Um. The last would be um, this is activity is dependent. Um. Is wetland dependent? It is not wetland dependent. There's a perfect road right there that we all use. And I believe that one of the reasons for the original denial uh was. Uh, that was included in, so. That's all I really have tonight, and I appreciate your time and um. I trust Eagle will do. What they should do, and that is protect our wetlands. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for your comments, Scott. All right, so next up is Ken Nelson, and after Ken is Barb Dobertin. So Ken, you are unmuted on our end. Feel free to unmute yourself and begin your comment when you're ready.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Good, good. So I I I'm on Hutchins Lake. We've been there twelve years. Uh. Our whole family comes up, uh, so I speak on behalf of a a dozen or so. Uh, family members, but the uh the last caller hit it on the head. I I I I think there's a a a. A play on public here. So sometimes the public is Mr. DeGroot and his investment interests. And 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 then when I use the term public, I'm using not just those of us on Hutchins Lake. Uh, that those wetlands, uh, and I brought this up the last two times, and I'll bring it up the next three times if we keep coming back. Uh, it feeds the uh uh the 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 water tables, the what 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 with people from Fenville drink is not Lake Michigan water. They drink well water. And and those wetlands are important, and and they are, they are clean. It's one of the most beautiful parts of the lake. Mr. DeGroot knew what he bought. He didn't pay lakefront property prices for those thousand feet. Uh, it it's fine that he's he's getting some land out of it and some use out of it, but if we don't know, if Eagle's got the right or Eagle has the. Mandate to protect. The um, the lake waters. There is a potentially foreseeable because the the work hasn't been done and unforeseeable. Harm to to people that aren't even partaking and enjoying Hutchins Lake. So I I I I I challenge Eagle to do what it did. I I know you gotta take these applications and 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 run with them like this, but I. I I I really am. There is a first uh uh feasible prudent alternative. That is there. He will get his money back on the property because Hutchins Lake's a great lake. And and I I I I think we just have to stick with it that way. Um, that's why these laws change. The the lot sizes got smaller, as Mr. DeGroot pointed out. Uh, from what the public uh parking area for a reason. We have to make a change. Right now, the 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 wake boating and other things, we're gonna have to make other decisions in response to the lake that that are gonna come down the road. But we can't give this. But we can't give this. Yeah, thank you. We 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 have to be careful giving um this up with somebody who's. Really just have one public interest and that's the De Groot Family Trust. Uh, not 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 the rest of us. So I I I love the lake. I I I wish we'd. Stop meeting like this and hopefully we can uh get on and 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 get to the sandbar one more time this summer. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for your comments, Ken. Alright, so next up is Barb Dobertin and then after Barb is Karen Barnes. So Barb, it looks like you are unmuted on our end. I just need to hit your, yep, you're unmuted. You can begin your comment when you're ready.
Can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you, Barb.
Hi, this is Barb Dobertin and I grew up on the lake. Um, and my parents, Skip and Helen Bale, still live on Hutchins Lake. Um, our family and my parents have the following concerns with the proposed marina docks and connecting footpath. First of all, we still feel like this application um. Should be denied. Um, the development and the structures are not necessary. Um, because the public boat launch gives the best option. Um, for the fifty ninth street parcels to have access to the lake. There would be no additional impact to the wildlife, wetlands, bottomlands, aesthetics, public trust, or the safety near the boat launch. With this very convenient and feasible option. Second of all, having the two seasonal docks and the marina located on each end of the protected cove shoreline. Would necessitate usage of the wetlands and the bottomlands to get from one area to the other. We feel this would result. An even more disruption to the fish, bird, and wildlife habitat habitats than the previous proposals. We think it's very possible that trees would get cut down to clear the path for golf cart usage and parking for the nine parcels. This would result with less shade along the shoreline that could dry out these wetlands and bottomlands. Third, um, concerning the proposed dock near the boat launch, we think it is very probable that the day use only. In one boat at a time, proposed conditions will not be carried out. Um, it will be impossible for D and R to monitor it often enough to deter misuse and. Um, I don't think it's acceptable at all that the homeowners association would be the ones that would do the monitoring. We think this would be in violation of part three oh one regulation restricting the end of the road activities. That obstruct ingress to egress from the inland lake. Um, so we think it would disrupt the boat launch area. And request that it be denied um to prevent problems in that area. In closing, I would like to say that I finally looked up what public trust means. And I found out that it's a legal principle in the Michigan constitution. That certain natural resources must be protected by the government in perpetuary. Perpetuity for the public's benefit and cannot be controlled by private interest. Um, I think that's the situation that we're facing and I am thankful that Michigan government. Has the regulations in place and that eagle department can do what's needed to protect our natural resources. I want to thank you for holding the meeting and also encourage you to work with Clyde Township. To rescind any zoning um decisions that have been made. That are only going to uh result in disruption to the wetlands and bottomlands. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your comment, Barb. Right, so next up. Uh, is Karen Barnes and then after Karen is Judy and Bruce Graham's. So Karen, it looks like you're unmuted. You can begin when you're ready to go.
Okay, first of all, thank you for holding these hearings. We do appreciate it. I've stated my objections to the past two requests of the group family and requesting again that eagle deny this last proposal. Now, instead of endangering one area, they are endangering two areas of the lake. Anytime you just put an ordinary dock in, there's going to be an effect on the lake. The groups are requesting doubling the danger to the many species that live, spawn, and nest in both of these areas. They will be interfering with the ecosystem and possible interfering with Fenville city aquifer. If this. Is approved, eagle will be setting a precedence that other property owners could do the same thing. With marinas all around the lake. What a terrible disaster that would be. The lake already provides boat launches. For all to use. There is no need to endanger our wetlands, fish, birds, and aquatic life. And that's not true about no life that David was talking about. That isn't always dry and there is life in there. You might not see it, but there's microorganisms in that wetland. I live by the boat launch and the proposed. And the proposed new dock to load and unload people, what exactly does that mean? Are there going to be backed up to the east trying to load? There are going to be lots of safety issues. Connecting these two docks by a boardwalk is going to mean a lot of interference. With the wetlands and the lake in general and the ecosystem. And talking about safety issues, does that mean that the owners can take a raft down there and just put the raft out? And send themselves who, what rules are there going to be? Are there going to be tourists, free boats loading and unloading? H I L A has also asked that we have.
One minute left, Karen.
Thank you. Navigational buoys. And when those are put in, we've requested that from the D and R. So that people exactly know where to enter. Off the launch area. When those are put in, that's also going to make a difference in the length. I I don't and the Peterson environmental study that I read. It says results of online info are not always accurate. Now that's a quote from that, but provides a presence. Well, we need accuracy. We're talking about a lake, a small lake that we enjoy. And I ask that you deny this request. It's really bad for the lake and thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your comment, Karen. Alright, um, I've got a couple here that. We're not finding the audience, but if you're calling in, but if your name is called and you're on the phone. Um, select pound two on your receiver and what that'll do is raise your hands and then um we can unmute you. And uh you can make your statement. So Judy and Bruce Graham's, I'm not seeing in the audience, but if you're on the phone. Uh, please select pound two on your receiver. Um, same goes for Brett Graham's. If you're on the phone. And you have a question or if you're on the phone and you want to make a statement, you haven't already done so, um, select pound two. But I'm not seeing any other. Raised hand, so we will. Move on Dennis Wilt. And then after Dennis is Joe Carlson. So Dennis, you are unmuted on our end. And just select the microphone icon and uh begin when you're ready.
Alright, uh Dennis will, I'm uh, I have a home on the southeast uh section of Hutchins Lake. My first point is. Cutting through all of the. Miscellaneous. This application is about one thing. Allowing Mister De Groot to sell his lots. With a boat slip. It should be denied. Because it's hard for me to find any public interest. Any public benefit. The only beneficiary is Mister De Groot. And now we find out tonight. That once this, if it is approved. And the lots are sold, he leaves. And an unknown homeowners association is going to enforce the rules about the dock and the marina. These are seasonable seasonal structures. This homeowners association. Who we don't know anything about what the rules are, who the people are. They're going to supervise construction of the docks in the spring, taking them down in the fall. In sensitive environmental areas. Mister De Groot is here today. It sounds like in a very short time, we'll be gone. And the rest of us in the public use people are going to be hurt by this. There is no public interest at all. The detriment's. Environmental harm. Putting the docks in and out every year. I submit it's worse than the last application that was denied. No responsible person to follow through on anything that it needs to be done with respect to the dock. Enforcement, construction, repair. It did, in addition. There's a rule at Hutchins Lake that boats need to stay a hundred feet away from docks. This in its entirety would be the largest dock on the lake. It takes away a large area from fishermen on the lake. It takes away a large area for boaters on the lake. It also, as a, as the previous uh speaker said, it sets a precedent that's dangerous.
Yeah, cranes has plenty of. Left Dennis.
Cranes has plenty of property. To to take a little bit of their peach. Orchard away, build a subdivision, put the De Groot application, if it's approved, back in the hopper and we'll have another marina. And that marina adds boats and takes usable lakefront or lake property away from fishing and boating. And then we'll have a third one. And you'll be in a situation, maybe you want to stop them, but you can't. There's no public benefit, no public interest, plenty of public detriments. This should be denied. It's also. It it should be denied for another reason. The applicant's compliance record is horrible and now he's leaving. You can't trust him. He's pulling a skier without a spotter. He puts a mannequin in his boat. To fool people that he has a spotter.
You're at time, so please wrap up your comments.
The other thing, you denied his application, his last application. What did he do? He built a dock right where he shouldn't until you stopped him. You've got a untrust.
Dennis, we're going to have to move, we're going to have to move on so that everybody has the same.
I'm I'm done. Please deny this and protect the lake.
Alright, thank you for your comments. Alright, so we have next up. Uh, actually Joe Carlson, we're not seeing in the audience, but if you're on the phone, again, select pound two to raise your hands and we'll call on you. Not seeing another raised hand there for Joe, so uh William Kapovich is next. And then after William is Paul Scott Clark. So William, you're unmuted on our end. Um, you can unmute yourself and begin when you're ready. Um, you should see a microphone icon. Yep, there you go.
Hi, my name is Bill Kapovich. I am president of the Eagle Point Estates HOA and I am speaking on behalf of the board and many of our members. First, we would like to thank eagle for giving us the opportunity to voice our concerns in opposition to this proposal. We too have numerous concerns regarding the damage to the wetlands, wildlife area, and safety issues adding around the boat launch. I would like to speak tonight about an additional concern that we have with this revised plan. One that we feel specifically impacts our neighborhood. Looking at Mister De Groot's safe plan, you can see that the second dock placement is now adjacent to parcel number two. We are concerned that this will add a great deal of unwanted traffic to our neighborhood. We are a family community with lots of foot traffic, narrow streets and no sidewalks. We have already installed our own, at our own time and expense, additional road signs to slow traffic down. And remind people that our our children play here. The shortest distance to the marina will be through Eagle Point Estates. Originally, our road was private. The county eventually took it over, but never updated them. We don't have cul-de-sacs, just dead end streets with no outlet. He's addressing a marina with no parking plan designated for dock number two. We realize that you may say this is not an eagle issue, but one for the township or county. However, we think this is a public trust issue. What eagle allows in Hutchins Lake not only impacts the lake itself, but the community surrounding it. Something else we would like to touch on. Mister De Groot used a picture of the park within our subdivision Eagle Point Park. He said, I quote, the proposed stacks are not inconsistent with these two dots at Eagle Point Park on Hutchins Lake. Looking at the photos, this may, this may be, this may appear the same. But the circumstances in which they were built are quite different. The backs within our park were constructed within our neighborhood and are part of our community and the people who reside there. The people who utilize them park in their own driveways, walk across the street to their boats. Mister De Groot wants to install one stock number one, some one thousand feet from fifty ninth street. Which is not located in the neighborhood that the intended boat owners are residing in, a very different situation. In conclusion, it is our hopes that you will deny the third marina proposal, not only for the many environmental safety reasons. That have been discussed in the previous two public hearings, but now the additional safety concern within our neighborhood. We feel eagle's been more than favorable with Mister De Groot in this project. It continues to creep up in size. Impacting the surrounding neighborhoods and consuming more than three thousand four hundred square foot of wetlands today. Thank you again for your time.
Yeah, thank you, Bill, for your comments. Alright, so next up is Paul Scott Clark. And then um, actually we were informed that Judy Graham's is on Barb Dobertin's account, so we're going to. Go to Judy next. After Paul Scott Clark, uh Paul, you can begin when you're ready.
Thank you very much. Can you hear me okay?
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay, uh, thanks. Uh, my name is Scott Clark. I serve on the board of the Hutchins Lake Improvement Association. We are uh pure advocates of the lake. And nothing more. Uh, that's what we want to do is to advocate goodness for the lake. Uh, it, public trust has been mentioned uh many times in uh in this meeting. And it it's really what it's all about, what it encompasses, public trust encompasses everything, environmental. Uh, a danger to other people on the lake reparions. Eagle has denied these plans before, um, and the plans aren't that much different. In essence, from what they were in the beginning. Um, and eagle. Had its reasons for denying this proposal, these past proposals. The this next proposal uh is one in which eagle, I think, would be contradictory. Uh, in its own way, if they decided to pass this, um. They know the reasons why it shouldn't be passed and I hope they uh they stand firm. Uh, the nine parcels of land and and the plan A, as you may call it, um. Yeah, how how many would follow? I I I just don't know. I know in his previous plans. There was a a plan A and there was a plan B and warehouses would come. Um, I have no problem whatsoever with the roots. I've found them uh over the years to be a very good people. Uh, I've been here for fifteen years. I've never had a real problem with them. But these uh, these houses. And it's been reiterated time and again, are not waterfront houses. I have no problem with. Mister De Groot building as many houses as he wants to on on the land that he owns and wants to build. That's fine. But these are not waterfront houses and there are many non waterfront houses around this lake. And they need to go to the public launch like everyone else.
Yeah, one minute left, Paul.
There would not be a problem if uh these houses were built and they sent their house, as they sent their boats to the public launch. And I just think it would all be fine. This one hundred sixty foot pier would endanger reparions on the other side of the public boat launch. Uh, I guess, hey, I've been here for fifteen years. Uh, I just believe for all reasons that this uh. Request uh should be denied. This proposal should be denied once again for all the reasons that eagle listed before. There's nothing new here. The uh build the houses, but don't build this huge pier. Next, that it's going to damage uh wetlands and the swans that nest there as they nest there and also on the west uh side of the lake as well. So uh, I respectfully ask that you deny this proposal. Thank you.
Thanks for your comment, Paul. Alright. So we are going to find uh Bob Barb Dobertin's account in the audience so that Judy Graham's can make a comment. Uh, when I want to provide one more point of clarification as well, if you are calling in by phone, there was not a need to register. To make a comment. Anyone on the phone can select pound two and we'll raise your hand. In Zoom. Um, if you didn't register and you're on the phone, you will have that opportunity to make your comment. Like I said, everyone in the audience. Will have an opportunity to make a a comment tonight, so. So are are you there, Judy? On Barb, Barb's, Barb's email?
Yes, I am. Okay, my name. Yes.
You can begin, Barb, or Judy.
My name is Judy Grams. I'm speaking on behalf of my husband Bruce and our entire family. We have been on this lake 65 years. Moving the dock to the west of the boat launch will affect a small island of trees in the wetlands, approximately 125 feet long by 90 feet wide. That is a nesting area for the swans, sandhill cranes and the lily pad area, approximately 180 feet long by 230 feet wide, which is an excellent spawning area for panfish. The water in this area is not deep enough to float a boat, especially a ski boat. How much damage dredging in this area is that going to cause? With all the destruction of the nesting and spawning areas that is going to happen to get enough water to bring in powerboats or pontoon boats, this is definitely a worse plan. Makes no difference where the location of the marina is. It is still through and over the protected wetlands. Access to this private marina via boardwalk through the upland wetlands, not only by walking path, but could also be used by quads, golf carts, motor scooters, et cetera, which will damage the wetlands as well. This is a private marina to be used by the nine lots the developer has for sale. In addition, he proposes a day dock, again, private in closer proximity to the 59th Street boat launch and through the wetlands. Once these lots are sold, the developer will be protected from any liabilities. His main concern is selling these lots as private access slots to the lake. This marina and day dock clearly violates the public trust and is of no benefit to the many existing homeowners and users of this beautiful small lake. The protected wetlands will be permanently destroyed, desecrated by this project. Wildlife and water life that inhabit the wetlands will cease to be.
You have one minute left, Judy.
Spawning areas.
You just.
Hill cranes, et cetera, will have no nest, no nesting area, no protected area to inhabit. Okay, the beauty and serenity of this beautiful small lake will become nonexistent. We are imploring Eagle to deny this in any future proposals for a marina, a day dock or boardwalk. We personally may be long gone, but our children, grandchildren and great grandchildren will continue to fight to keep the protected wetlands, wildlife and fish spawning area intact as well as maintain safety on Hutchins Lake. The public boat launch on 59th Street is a prudent and feasible alternative. Respectfully, Judy and Bruce Grams, thank you.
Yeah, thanks for coming, Judy. So next up is Peter Post and then after Peter is Lauren Barnes. So Peter, it looks like you're unmuted on our side of things.
Yes, thank you. You can hear me?
Yep, begin when, you can begin when you're ready.
Very good. Uh, once again, thanks to Eagle for hearing from the community in regards to the group proposal for a marina on Hutchins Lake. I think as a whole, the community has appreciated Eagle's efforts to curtail these plans to maintain the integrity of the lake ecologically and in regards to boat traffic. I believe Eagle has remained true to its own calling in these regards, as noted in quotes from your own website. First Eagle's mission, to protect Michigan's environment and public health by managing air, water, land and energy resources. Mr. Degroot is not a Michigan resident and I think it's not unreasonable that the new landowners he's courting will also be from out of state. Although that provides tourism dollars for township coffers, care must be taken not to overextend the recreational abilities of our Spring Fred Lake with fast boats and destroyed wetlands. There's an appreciable difference between those who come to play on the lake and the vested opinions of those who make their homes there. It was interesting, I thought, to hear Mr. Group refer to, to some of the marina users as guests and hopefully as good guests. From, uh, Eagle's mission statement. Uh, Michigan that respects people, treasures natural resources and fosters thriving communities throughout our two peninsulas. This community has long argued that any structures in the areas proposed by Degroot pose unnecessary environmental and nautical dangers. Docking areas, areas are an unnecessary privilege for persons living off the lake, especially when a boat launch is a viable option and available for their use. And finally, from Eagle's vision. Eagle takes a strategic approach that accounts for the impact of today's actions on future generations. Hutchins Lake is not.
One, one minute left, Peter.
Thank you. Hutchins Lake is not a private pool. Mistakes can be, cannot easily be corrected by changing the water or adding more chlorine. Concerns of the local residents are very real. I have not heard seasonal defined or if Mr. Group will be, will be fined if the dock remains in, out of season. But perhaps the thought that is that the lake can recover postseason. I'm not sure of that as a strategy. My hope is that Eagle will continue to honor the concerns of the persons that share this beautiful lake and wildlife sanctuary. Thank you for listening and I certainly wouldn't mind if we could stop meeting this way.
Now, thanks for coming, Peter. Right. Uh, next up is Lauren Barnes and then after Lauren is Joseph Bianco. So Lauren, you can begin when you're ready.
I appreciate it. I live three doors down from the boat launch, so I have witnessed many incidents at the boat launch and this will not help that. I have a few points here. There is no licensed marinas on Hutchins Lake, so I want to make that clear. There's no riparian rights to propose lots. The marina is only allowed for riparian rights. A hundred foot of frontage that is talked about does not have deeded frontage. If they want to deed that 100 by 150, which is 15,000 square feet, but that's not how they're doing it. All they are doing is again funneling rights to a dock so you can sell the lots at a higher premium. The groups talk about public interest benefits. And as homework stated, that there is no public benefit, just owner benefits. How does this proposal adversely affect the wetlands and aquatic life? You've heard from many people on this call tonight that it will severely adversely affect aquatic life, both in the wetlands and in the low water areas where the proposal is slated. Clyde Township also has a, uh, ordinance that if there is a marina, there shall be a designated established parking area to support a marina. That is not part of this proposal. And last comment for Eagle, this is a little disturbing to me. So if Eagle made any proposals to support the Degroot's in this marina, I formally request that Eagle provide me and all the members on this call those documents or suggestions that may have benefited this propo, this proposed project. So if Eagle did make any proposals outside of their jurisdiction, I formally request that we have access to those. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for the comment, Lauren. Um, so next up is Joseph Bianco. And then after Joseph is Gina Bogner. So Joseph, you're unmuted on our end. You can begin when you're ready.
Can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
All right. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Joe Bianco and I'm representing myself and my family. Hutchins Lake is nearing an ecological tipping point because its scarce wetlands, natural shorelines and habitats are being threatened by more residential development. More development threatens their very existence and the problem is compounded by the runoff pollution from the new properties and the pollution from the powered watercraft that are accessed from these properties. Proving this and related applications will, uh, set a danger, dangerous precedent for continued destruction of these precious resources. This application should be denied, be denied because it impairs or destroys scarce natural resources of the lake. It increases safety risks for all who enjoy the lake. It adversely impacts the aesthetics and the enjoyment of the lake. It is not in the public interest and only benefits the applicant and the future owners of the applicant's parcels. Lastly, feasible and prudent alternatives exist. The scale and nature of this development project is indeed unprecedented on Hutchins Lake. Yet the applicant continues to increase scope and impact with no end in sight. The applicant continues to demonstrate willful disregard for the public trust and safety. The applicant continues to demonstrate that he cannot be trusted to be a steward of the lake, its wetlands, its uplands and the community. The proposed marina is one of many projects that are being planned by the applicant that will harm the Hutchins Lake ecosystem and community. The adverse impact is profound when you consider the total scope of this application combined with the applicant's other related projects. Up to 9,396 square feet of wetland disturbed or destroyed by structures. Nine to 18 more powered watercraft polluting the lake, creating congestion and increasing safety risks. A thousand feet of natural shoreline and habitat disturbed or destroyed. 12.87 acres of woods and wildlife disturbed, displaced or destroyed by development. Eleven more parcels.
One minute left, Joe.
Thank you. Eleven more parcels polluting the wetlands and lake with fertilizer and pesticides. Eleven more septic fields potentially polluting the lake and 11 more wells draining a main aquifer that feeds the lake. I plead that we all work together to protect the Hutchins Lake ecosystem and community and prevent our beloved lake from being pushed beyond its tipping point. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for comments, Joel. All right, next up is Gina Bogner and then after Gina is Scott Wenderstrom. So Gina, you can begin when you're ready. It looks like you're unmuted.
Okay, sounds great. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay, great. Um, I'm reading this on behalf of my husband Kevin Bogner, who is on a flight and unable to attend tonight's call. Um, I thank you for the opportunity to speak. I represent our family and our future generations. We are full-time residents of the lake and like all of us here tonight, we are requesting that this application once again be denied. I want to thank these friends on, around the lake and in the community, the 50-plus families who collaborate on how we address this threat to our lake, pool our money for legal fees and show up for events like tonight. Despite application requirements that require projects like this must be in the public interest, we continue to show that the public does not want this and there is no public interest being met. Second, I want to thank Eagle for the opportunity for tonight and also for denying the selfish and arrogant proposals twice already in the past and for seeing the seriousness of what we're discussing once again. My sincere request of Eagle tonight is to put an end to this nonsense, this waste of public tax money and repetitive requests. Changing location of the dock to parcel two does nothing to change the requirements that denied his requests in the past. Once again, the request completely ignores two main things. It ignores the entire discussion we had over a year ago about the environmental impacts to the wetlands, the boardwalk, the boardwalk to the dock and the installation of the dock itself. In fact, it places the main dock closer to the wetlands area than is like as others have mentioned, is home to a multitude of wildlife. It puts the dock exactly where the swans nested this spring and closer to the wetland island area. Multiple surf boats in this very shallow area will surely churn and disrupt the lake's wildlife literally right next to it. Zero consideration to the conservation issues have been shown to be addressed by Mr. Degroot. It continues to ignore safety issues that were, were heard loud and clear during our last two hearings. In Exhibit Four, it shows a second day use dock as we've all discussed tonight, 48 feet from the boat launch line. Think about that. That's about the same lake frontage as many of our lots.
You have one, one minute left, Gina.
Thank you. This is the same area Mr. Degroot illegally installed a temporary dock in the lake next to the boat launch, which the sheriff had to call, be called to remove. Forty-eight feet with the frequent winds on that corner of the lake will absolutely result in safety issues from day moorings, attempts and congestion. Locations and configurations have changed again, but once again, nothing has changed to deem the safer visitors to the lake, residents of the lake or wildlife. And I'll, I'd like to remind the people making a decision, his lots are literally on a street down the road from the public launch. In fact, the closest buildable lot is almost exactly a thousand feet from the water's edge, making it easy to drop an owner's boat in via the boat launch like all the rest of the visitors and fishermen do every day. There's no value except to increase the value of his lots. Additionally, he has had reputation, as we've all discussed, of snubbing his nose at others at authority and at rules.
And Gina, you're at time, so can you please wrap up?
Yep, I got one more statement. If there's a way around something to benefit him, he has shown that he will go for it regardless of the risk to others or of their safety. I really hope that this third hearing is, is going to be denied and that we will make it the last time we sit through hours of this again for his greed and personal gain. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you for your comment. All right. So next up is Scott Wenderstrom and then after Scott is Pete Hoekstra. Scott, you are unmuted on our end. Um, you can unmute yourself and begin to comment when you're ready. You there, Scott? It, it looks like you're unmuted, so you should be able to make a statement through your computer. Okay, if, if you're having some technical issues, Scott will come back to you. Just raise your hand or we'll, we'll actually try to go on to Mr. Hoekstra first and then we'll come back to you. I'll give you another opportunity. All right. All right, so next up, um, Pete Hoekstra. You are unmuted on our end. Uh, feel free to unmute yourself and begin when you're ready.
Hey, great. Thank you. And thank you to Eagle for, uh, once again, holding a public hearing. Uh, also thank you to all of the fellow residents of the Hutchins Lake community for the wonderful and awesome comments that you've contributed tonight. And let me just try to add a little bit of, uh, perspective. We live over on the east end of Hutchins Lake and looking out our windows, this, uh, marina proposed by the Degroot family, uh, will be right outside of our window. But more importantly, I think the, as Pete Post brought up, you know, Mr. Degroot has, you know, selectively identified what his responsibilities are, what the responsibilities of Eagle are to protect the wetlands. And I think as you representatives of Eagle, uh, clearly pointed out, you have a much broader responsibility. It includes public interest, uh, you know, impact on our waters and other natural resources. Clearly this marina, this expanded proposal for Mr. Degroot will have a major impact on not only the wetlands, but the shallows. Uh, and that's what I think many of us are worried about. It's the shallows where you've got the lily pads, where you've got the swan family. Uh, you know, the two swans and the four baby swans who have spent the last three, four months, uh, you know, growing there. That is what is going to be impacted by this. Uh, you're gonna see a tremendous amount of boat activity. Uh, there's no guarantee that as we open up the shoreline to these 11 properties, uh, that there will be kayaks, there will be, uh, there will be paddle boards, uh, there will be kids playing in the water. Uh, and it won't be too long before those lily pads and that part of the lake is gone. We will destroy it and once it is destroyed, it's gone forever. There's a reason why this part of the lake is one of the last parts of the lake, uh, to be proposed for development. And it's because of the unique characteristic, uh, of that part of the lake. People on Hutchins Lake, people in the area have recognized that this piece of property, this piece of waterfront is absolutely essential to the health of not only the lake, but of the, uh, the aquifer for the city of Fenville, for the community and those types of things. And that's why government and local agencies and people in the Hutchins Lake community.
One minute left, Mr. Hoekstra.
Great, thank you. Uh, have protected that part of the lake, uh, for as long as, uh, this lake has been developed. Uh, and I think it's imperative that the, you know, that Eagle once again, s- step in and protect this section of the lake. We don't want to turn this section of the lake over to a homeowners association, uh, of 11 people who we have no idea who they are, but the most important thing on this, it's 11 homeowners and parcels. That none of them actually touch Hutchins Lake. This is absolutely crazy. And so, you know, we appreciate the work that Eagle has done in protecting the waterfront, the natural resources, uh, of this lake. Um, you know, we, uh, we, we hope and expect that you'll. You know, we, we, we hope and expect that you'll continue to do the excellent job that you've done in the past and maintain the integrity of our lake and turn down this massive marina proposal for one of the most sensitive areas of our lake. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you for your comment. All right, we're going to go back to Scott Wendersstrom and then, and see if Scott's microphone is working now. All right, Scott, you are unmuted on, on our end. Do you want to try unmuting yourself again? And we'll see if this, your microphone works. And again, you can just unmute yourself by selecting the microphone icon on a lower left-hand side. And still not, I'm not seeing you unmuting your mic, Scott. So if you need to make a comment and you want to make a comment, we're going to move on after this to the other raised, the people have the raised hands, either by phone or on the computer, if you haven't made a comment yet. So if anybody is out there who hasn't made a comment and didn't register or changed your mind, you're more than welcome to make a comment. Just select the raise hand icon at the bottom of your screen or if you're on the phone, select pound two and we'll call on you using your last four digits of your number. All right, so with that, it looks like Scott's microphone is still not, is still muted. So we will move on. And then I should also mention that if you do have technical difficulties, you can also submit a comment via the other ways, by mail or through my Enviro, which I will show you again after this part of the hearing. So first up is Pamela Rafferty. Pamela, we are going to unmute you on our end and then you can unmute yourself and begin when you're ready.
Hello, this is actually John Rafferty, Pamela's husband, speaking on behalf of her and I and our family. First, I'd like to thank Eagle for your diligence in the past, to hear from the public on, on this topic and these matters. Your reject, your rejection of the prior proposals to us seem very logical and justified. In the interest of time, I principally want to focus on the issue of safety and liability. I think it's easy to look at some of these topographical maps, views from the sky and, and think of boat driving as like car driving where the road is fixed and the steering is exact. We all know from, from the lake experience, that's not the case when you're on the water. The wind, the current storms come up, the experience of the driver all come into play. And I think when you look at the alt E location of the dock and how it faces and you look at the day use dock, its location in conjunction with the public boat launch. And when you look, look at all of those in proximity together, there's still going to be an unbelievable amount of traffic that is coming together during, especially during times of stress. And if anyone's been on that lake, when a storm blows through quickly, the race to the boat launch is something to behold. And again, driving and parking a boat, mooring a boat is not an exact science. There'll be inexperienced drivers and the oper- and the opportunity for problems to develop there is very real. And, and I, and I'm sure Ryan, Jason, Derek and all the decision makers here, I don't, I don't want to insult you by his comments. I know you've been so diligent, but we just implore you to think deeply about this issue of safety and liability. The documented concern of the community of this lake is real. It's, it's substantial. If there, if there were to be an accident or, or worse, you know, a fatality, there's, there's going to be such a documented track record of the concern that existed for safety that was apparently ignored or overcome. And I, I think, I just think it will be bad for everyone involved. So we, we ask that you reject this proposal for many reasons, but principally on the matter of public safety. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your comment, John. All right, next is phone-in caller, his last four digits, two, one, one, zero. You're unmuted. Begin your comment when you're ready.
Yeah, hi, this is Scott Wendersstrom. Sorry, my computer didn't work before. So anyway, I would like to speak on behalf of myself and my wife Lisa. Mr. DeGroot has already said that the purpose of this permit is to funnel and upland housing development to a marina. This marina would be located in a sensitive area of Hutchins Lake, destroying wetlands, causing safety hazards and harming this sensitive ecosystem. No professional wetland delineation report has been submitted, only a preliminary report hired by the applicant. Eagle should not trust this report and should be well informed as to the hazards and, and the requirements of this ecosystem. As all of the submitted dimensions and depths should be reconfirmed, as many concerned citizens have refuted many of the applicant's claims. If a marina is approved, it will be a short time before it is expanded and the foot and motorized vehicle traffic permanently destroy this area. No one will be held responsible to fix the destroyed area. Please stop the destruction before it occurs. And please document the current status of this wetlands area because one way or the other, expect the destruction to happen. There are other options for this development to access the lake without destroying the area. And is it not a possibility that all of the three through nine lot residents will be trudging through the, the nine feet of wetlands if you don't permit this marina? This proposal is so similar to previously denied proposals that we do not understand why it's allowed to be reapplied for or to even be considered. DeGroot even rated this proposal initially as worse than the one that was rejected. We have all heard that when you put lipstick on a pig, it is still a pig. This is much worse as a developer is adding lipstick, makeup and a wig to this pig of an application. Please deny it.
One minute left.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks for your comments, Scott. Glad you're able to call in. All right, next up, Daniel Roberts. Now, Daniel, you are unmuted on our end. You can unmute yourself when you're ready and begin your comment.
Good evening and thank you very much for allowing me to speak on this matter. I am a, speaking on behalf of myself and my family. We've been on the lake for twenty-six years. We kind of agree with everyone that made statements during this meeting already. And we feel that Eagle should do an assessment of the wetlands as well as document the depth of the water are to make and record the species that actually live in this area. I don't feel that, we don't feel that the DeGruets are actually speaking on those behaves and what's really there. By aligning this proposal will destroy the wetlands as well as the ecosystem of Hutchins Lake. Many of us have already stated that. As Mr. DeGroot stated himself, the only benefit for this proposal is for the properties that he is attempting to sell. There have been several requests for Mr. DeGroot to explain the benefits for the, the remaining lake residents for both seasonal and permanent residents. And he has not been able to express any other than the benefits for the eleven plots that he is building on. Please deny this proposal in the best interest of all lake residents. Thank you for the time.
Yeah, thank you for your comment. All right, next up is phone-in caller, three, five, two, nine. It looks like you are unmuted and you can begin when you're ready. Are you there on the phone? Last four digits, three, five, two, nine?
Can you hear me now?
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate Jason and Eagle Board members. I appreciate you giving me a minute of time. I am representing the Gerard family, members and previous to King family of the lake. Ben, now my children will be fifth gen kids on this lake and heartbroken, torn up and distraught over what one person is trying to do to the lake. I agree with everything everybody has said of the ecosystem. And I can say that I went out two days ago and was able to catch a fifteen-pound northern on this small aquatic lake due to people like Mr. Graham, Bruce Graham, other individuals who built up those wetlands. You're about ready to possibly let be tore down. And those are things we need to take in consideration of the wetlands for the spawning areas, for the birds, for the fish, for everything in general that that area does, especially the aquifer. As I sit and look at prints and drawings that are submitted, they give no detail to the end result of how far off a land directly they are, how wide they are, how long they are, dimensions that do not give anything. You look at in turn pilings, how big are the pilings he's planning on driving? How deep are these pilings he plans to drive down? The lake is thirty-four feet deep. If I look at the pilings and try to adjust my thoughts and my look at those doing construction, my entire life of fifty-four years old, I don't see a depth of how far those pilings. You go down and hit an aquifer, you're going to have one or two problems. You're going to drain a lake or you're going to start to overflow a lake. And Mr. DeGroot will not admit to that, but he knows that could be an issue that he could drain the lake if he hits the wrong aquifer driving pilings. Are they eight-inch, ten-inch steel pilings, twelve-inch steel pilings going down to hold his dock? And my other question would be, what is seasonal? What's that?
Oh, you have one minute left.
Thank you. Thank you. What is seasonal? Seasonal in Michigan is various and, and obscure term as I understand it, that could be anywhere from his thoughts of January to December. I don't know. I would like more things narrowed down on his plans. If they, if you are even considering this, of the pilings concern me gravely because most people wouldn't understand that if you hit an aquifer, you could drain this lake because you go below thirty-four feet, this lake is that maximum depth. And I heard Mr. DeGroot say, and I will give him an opportunity to come back to me and state in this meeting, that that area is four foot deep. Pah, I've been here my entire life, fished that area, walked that area, saw the turtles, saw the birds, saw everything. That area is not four foot deep.
Your time is up, caller. If you could wrap up your comments, please.
I will reiterate in the end result to Eagle. Please deny all of this. This is just ridiculous. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your comments. All right, next up is Jay Johnson. Jay, you're unmuted on our end. You can unmute yourself by selecting the microphone icon and, and you can begin when you're ready. It looks like you're unmuted.
Hi, thanks, Jason. I'm a frequent visitor to the lake. My family and I like to kayak in the cove in question. We see swans, frogs, turtles, geese, ducks and fish swimming through the lily pads. There is no doubt this natural setting would be disturbed and potentially permanently destroyed if Eagle passes this application. I've heard tonight, the applicant state, the depth of the proposed day dock was three and a half to four feet deep. It's very important for Eagle to know that this is not accurate. Per a paddle from my kayak, measurement taken today, the depth of the water in question was less than twelve inches at the location at the end of the proposed day dock. In other words, I stuck a kayak paddle in the water and it didn't even get to the end of the paddle. It was about ten inches deep. I thank Eagle for listening to my concerns and hope they do the right thing.
Thank you for your comments, Jay.
You're welcome.
All right, next up is my last raised hand, phone-in caller, five, five, seven, one. If anybody else is on the line tonight, either by phone or by the computer, feel, feel free to raise your hand so that you can ask your question or so that you can make your statement. If you're on the phone, select pound two, otherwise raise your hand in zoom and phone, phone-in caller. You can begin when you're ready. It looks like you're unmuted.
Yes, I'm, I'm hoping you can hear me. This is Jill O'Connor.
Yep, we can hear you.
Very good. I just wanted to mention a few concerns that I have after listening to all of the discussion. Particularly the day use dock is still in a shallow area. This is depicted by the DNR as a fragile area and boats producing backwash and motor prop damage will be detrimental to wildlife, particularly fish that are spawning in that area. You know, they won't be able to keep their eggs clean with all of the, the debris and the water and the stirrup and that will impact the fishery. I don't feel that the day use dock is in the public interest at all. It will be a danger to ingress and ingressing traffic. I think any kind of dredging to put this day use dock in would be detrimental to the wetland area in that shallow basin area that is such a jewel to the lake. Wetland disturbance near the water is a negative impact. I'm sure you're familiar with Michigan State Score the Shore Program. This area rates super high because there is nothing in it. It's natural right now. It's the highest rated area along with the cranes area when we go around the perimeter of the lake. This would negatively impact and ruin that score, the shore score that we have for this area. Also, purple loosestrife is more abundant in spreading because of the disturbance in this area. I know as a member of HLIA, we priced how to address the purple loosestrife problem. It was only in one area. Now this is becoming another huge area. You should go and look at it and you know how detrimental. And lastly, I just want to ask Eagle to please go out and check the depths of the water in these areas. Check the surrounding situations and we trust that you will deny this application. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you for your comment. All right, is there anybody else? I don't have any other raised hands right now. We'll give you a couple more seconds in case anybody changes their mind, wants to make a comment and hasn't made a comment already. So select pound two if you're on the phone or raise your hand in zoom. And while we're waiting a couple of seconds, I just want to let you know we're going to go through those other ways to make a comment here in a little bit again so that you'll be able to have that opportunity to provide additional comments. Or if you didn't make one tonight and wanted to do another method, that will be available to you. So it looks like we do have a raised hand, a phone-in caller, one, eight, eight, two. Looks like you are unmuted and you can begin when you're ready.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Oh, okay, great. My name is Doug Helmick. I'm calling on behalf of my brother-in-law and sister-in-law and my wife, all who've been on Hutchins Lake for over fifty years. First of all, I want to thank Eagle for all the hard work I've pulled this all together. You've, I don't know how you do it. It's very complicated. But so thank you very much. Three points. One is we, I don't want to be redundant, but I want to talk a little bit about precedent. Once we approve, I, I, I promise you, we'll, we'll be back in one, two or three years with another proposal for a marina. So we may as well stop it right now because we don't want to deal with precedent. Number two, we heard a lot about the environment, our focus on dredging. If they put the dock in before telling us how deep they're going to dredge, because I promise you, the boats that are going to go in there will not fit in that shallow water in that current dock situation. So dredging will destroy the environment. So dredging will destroy the environment and be an ecological disaster. And number three, boat traffic is going to be astronomically increased and and you know, you look at twenty-five years ago, we had ski boats and it was kind of tolerable. Now we have big wakeboard boats and God bless the people that have those, but they throw up big wakes. Like last Sunday, you could barely sit on the shore and you had so much, so much turbulence in the water. It was unbelievable. So boat traffic will go up significantly. Anyway, so those are the three points. It's it's precedent, it's environmental damage through dredging, and it's the boat traffic. So thank you very much for allowing me to speak.
Yeah, thank you for making a comment. All right, is there anybody else who would like to make a comment at this time? Before we move on, and someone who, anyone who hasn't made a comment already. All right, I'm still not seeing any raised hands. So Jason, if you want to read the closing statement tonight.
Thanks, Ryan. Thank you for your comments and cooperation. We appreciate your interest in the proposed project and that you took the time to be here tonight. As indicated at the beginning of the hearing, you may submit additional written comments until September seventh, two thousand twenty-three. Following the close of the public comment period, we will consider all comments received and make a decision on the proposed project. Just to remind those that may still want to submit a project, or excuse me, submit a comment. Comments can be submitted via my Enviro, email or US Mail. The hearing is now closed. Thank you again.
All right, thanks, Jason. As Jason mentioned, those other ways to make an official comment are on your screen. And I'll read those off for the people on the phone by my Enviro, submission number H P N six X Z N E Y one G N. And for those on their computer, you'll see it in the chat in front of you or by mail to Eagle Water Resources Division, Kalamazoo District Office. And that address is seven, nine, five, three, Adobe Road, spelled A D O B E Road. And that's Kalamazoo, Michigan, four, nine, zero, zero, nine. And so you'll have ten days to make additional comments. And so the deadline will be September seventh for making those comments. All right, I know we didn't get through all the questions tonight. If you have further questions, you can contact Jason Combs. Jason's phone number is two, six, nine, five, six, eight, two, six, nine, three. And I'll repeat that one more time, two, six, nine, five, six, eight, two, six, nine, three, or by email to combs J eight, and that's C O M B S J eight at michigan.gov. So C O M B S J eight at M I C H I G A N dot gov. All right, and with that, any closing comments for us, Derek?
Yeah, just like to thank everybody again, joining either via Zoom or on the phone, taking a couple hours out of your time to, you know, participate in this hearing and to hear from everybody, the comments on the project. Appreciate Mr. DeGroot presenting, providing some information on the project. And again, everybody who took the time to participate. So thanks again, and I hope everybody just has a great night.
All right, thanks, Derek. Yeah, thanks to all the panelists, everyone who's on the line. My last thing, I just want to remind you that this was recorded, this hearing, so it'll be on our YouTube channel, Eagle's YouTube channel in the next couple days. So you can review it if you'd like, forward it on, it'll be available. So with that, everyone, have a great rest of your evening. Good night.